Make a second trip here so far this year, Second County Hall, Lake County. I think it's my 51st overall in 18 months. So we'll try and, as you know, get around the district where I learn what's going on and what we need to be working on. Hello, come on in. Just getting started. So it's good to be back in Lake County and get caught up on what's on your mind. So I'll give you a little update on some of the things we've been working on, some progress that we've made, and then, as usual, I'd rather get into Q and A. I want to thank commissioners, of course, for their continuous counsel and help and the work we do together. It's a great team. So congressionally, before we recess for the two political conventions, we moved the Interior Appropriations Bill, which is the first time we've been able to move that as a standalone since 2009. Contained therein are a number of provisions I think are really important for our district, at least from my perspective, our part of the world. Things like delisting the wolves in the lower 48. You know, if you're driving up 395, you realize they must be really, really smart because they know not to cross 395 because if they do, they're treated one way versus the other. So that passed in the House. There was an effort to take it out, and we sustained that. We also had a provision in there that I helped engineer to prevent any funds from being spent to declare a national monument out in Mountier County or, for that matter, Josephine Jackson Counties where there are also rumors of national monument designation. We fought back opposition on that, held that as well. I'm just out in Ontario and, you know, very concerned that this monument to an half million acres may get shut down their throat with no local involvement. We already have seven layers of management over these lands and waters. The 8th is, in my opinion, designed to just shut down our way of life more. So we're pushing back on that. We also continue to try and rein in some of the excess regulatory authorities of the agencies, including the EPA. We continue to work over their budget and keep it in line. I think it's back to a 2008 level, a 1989 staffing level. They still don't get the message, so we put a provision in there to prevent any funds from being spent to implement the waters of the U.S. rule, proposed rule that, in its worst context, could regulate everything from intermittent streams to stockpots and is a real unnecessary and overly burdensome regulation. So we got that in there. So we had a lot of good things. In addition, we got a 10-year fully funded average for firefighting, an additional $30 million for fuel reduction work in the bill. And we passed it across the House floor with all those provisions, and it's now over in the Senate. So it's really up now to the Senate to try and get these appropriations bills moved. We addressed some other issues of importance for the country. One deals with the epidemic of opioid overdose, painkiller overdose. We've seen a dramatic increase in the abuse of opioids. You know, in Oregon, we have more people die from opioid overdose than we do in car accidents. And unless you get caught up in that world, you don't even realize that's what's happening. So we made a number of changes to allow physicians to actually treat more patients to get them off of an addiction using an alternative. Right now, they're limited, I think, to no more than 50 patients. We take that up to 250 so we can create a off-ramp for people who have addiction. We set up a process to determine better practices, best practices for prescribing these very important painkillers, but very addictive painkillers. Many people are on them for life and manage fine. Others, it's a real problem. Morning, come on in there. We've got seats over here. We haven't passed the collection plate yet. So just take your way. So we dealt with the opioid situation to provide for more treatment, access to more treatment. Then we changed, just to tell you kind of what you run into. If you have a knee injury or something, you get prescribed the painkiller, you have to fill the prescription. You can't partially fill a prescription. As a result, people will take them for a day or two and go, that's all I needed. I'm not going to take any more of that stuff. And goes to the medicine cabinet. Well, in some cases, it finds its way out of the medicine cabinet into the black market, either through theft or somebody sells it. So now we changed the law so that you can partially fill that prescription, then go back and get more if needed. The idea is to get the enormous number of these pills out of the market that shouldn't be out there legally. So anyway, we've made a number of changes there. We also, for the first time since John Kennedy was president, began a major overhaul of the mental health services that the federal government, three-year tax dollars, provides. It's been, since his administration, when mental health services first began being created. Today, we spend $130 billion a year, $130 billion a year on mental health services, one way or another. There are 112 separate programs, virtually none of which are peer-reviewed to see if they actually work. And yet, if you're a child with a mental health disorder of some sort, there's one provider for every 2,000 children in that situation. One statistic that was used on the House floor during the debate is once you're prescribed by somebody for mental health care coverage, that you need to go get treatment, it can be, on average, 400 days before you can get in to see a provider. So I mean, there are all this whole array of problems. We did things like open up for telepsychiatry so that we can use the marvels of the internet communication abilities to do counseling over the internet and have that count and be approved and all that, as well as work on reforming these programs so that they get peer-reviewed. So we can actually have programs for investing and to help people in need in a way that we know actually works and not just throwing money at a problem. So that's moving through. On the forestry subject, oh, back on the interior to the light of some county commissions more than others, we did fully fund payment of taxes, the basically property tax payments from the federal government to counties. Formulas, we've talked, have some issues with it that need to be fixed over time, but at least we're at the fully funded level, which is, I think, a really important obligation of federal government to be a good neighbor. We're still working on forestry legislation. We've passed it in the House each of the last four years, bipartisan bill to reform how we manage our public lands, our forestry areas, so that we can get more active management. We've had trouble in the Senate, but this year, we, both houses have been working on an energy bill, and as part of that, we've put these forestry provisions on that bill in an effort to get this whole issue into a bigger conference, if you will, between the House and the Senate. So we're out of session until September. I know there's staff-to-staff discussions. I'm not on that conference, but I have a lot of friends that are, and so we're going to try and hold those, some of the forestry provisions as we go forward. But let me stop with that, and thank you all for coming out today. And I'd be happy to get your input and take your questions. Mr. Winters has agreed to answer them all.
I've been on the dithr thing. Well, Congressman, as you know, I won't be shy.
Good.
As you know, Red Rock is moving here and have representatives, and all their supplies can be off private lands. The renewable energy number credits, the federal forests do not apply for it.
Yep.
We're working with the Senator Wyden to introduce a bill that should be over recess or shortly after. I've seen the final draft with Samaras. That would allow, in the future sometime, for those credits.
Excellent.
With no appropriation asked from Congress.
Good.
So your support in introducing it on the House side, and I know staffs have been talking to each other, would be truly appreciated.
Yeah. Has he found an offset for it? Because you still have to pay for it through the tax code then.
But there's no appropriation.
Correct. But you still have to find an offset.
I don't know. I don't know.
I think that's the lingering issue. On the House side, in order to get it actually enacted, you have to show how you're going to pay for it. And so while it doesn't require a direct appropriation...
There was some talk at the last conference on that, and I'll be honest, my memory anymore is not, I don't remember what it was said, so... But there was, there was being talked about.
Good, because that's the final hurdle, I think, to getting it done.
Well, we appreciate you, all the, we appreciate everything you've done in forestry and everything you do over the years.
Well, if we could create some incentives for biomass out of the forest, we could pay for the restoration work, create jobs locally. What a concept.
Amen.
It costs a fire, so you've got trouble. Probably have some folks here from some of the agencies, but if memory serves me right, it costs you four times as much to fight a fire as it does to put one out, or to prevent one. So I'm into long-term strategies that work. Oh, come on.
I have a question.
All right.
We have a lot of representation outside of Multnomah County. Would you support a new senate structure of one senator per county in Oregon legislature to return to a bicameral government-state?
I'd like to see us have a stronger representation base out of the area. However, I think the U.S. Supreme Court's already ruled on that matter in a one-person, one-vote requirement, which is what did away with that. Oregon, at one time, had it a little different. I don't think it was one senator per county, but the Constitution requires one equal vote, equal representation, and so that's what precludes that from happening. Federally, of course, it's prescribed in the U.S. Constitution that every state gets two. That principle doesn't apply to counties. And so there used to be, they used to have it divided up to where you're like four or five or something in a county. I mean, it was done differently. I don't remember the case. I'm not an attorney. Come on, that usually gets a little applause. That's an attorney joke, but we're praying to tell you. So I don't think you'd pass constitutional muster to go down that path. But here's the other piece. After every census, every 10 years, either the legislature or the Secretary of State draws those boundaries. And while they have to be equal in population per district, where those lines get drawn is enormously important and you can tilt, put a thumb on the scale of fairness. And almost always, not always, almost always, the legislature fails to get that done because of politics, and it often defaults to the Secretary of State. And so the extent you care about those issues, Secretary of State's office is critical in probably designing those lines. And it doesn't take much of a tweak to change the balance of power in Salem, one way or the other. So I'd drive your energy toward figuring out who you like for Secretary of State who might be from outside of metropolitan Portland area.
How's our Minnesota?
Maybe he's a real guy. Could be. Could be. How am I supposed to get too political on the official meetings? Dennis Richardson is a good friend of mine when he served in the legislature. How's that all leave alone?
Thank you for the support on the pill.
Yep.
That is so huge to Lake County, many other eastern Oregon counties. And thank you to you and your staff to look at some work that Commissioner Shamm has done on how that could be even more of an equalization way that would be better for all of our counties. Support on safety net, the superior roles of schools, that has been reduced so much and it's coming to an end. We're struggling. Our road department's in trouble. Thank you to try to keep that alive any way you can. Under the Red Rock and the pilot program, and it's interesting, and I always hear that it has to have offsets. When we apply for grants and everything, we use match. So instead of calling offsets, or maybe you can articulate this, right? The savings on the catastrophic fires or the health of our forests has a huge value. Maybe it's not cash, but it saves cash being spent. So as people start chasing that offsets, pretty easy to show that the value of ruining that is worth more than the offsets in the long run.
Yeah, you're right. What we run into federally, just to tell you the frustration I often have, I pulled out my hair, is that it has to be out of the same account, the way the Congressional Budget Office scores and makes the decisions. I remember we tried at one point to put in law that we would increase harvest levels, knowing that every other manager of timberlands makes money when they harvest, and that that would produce revenue we could use for additional timber management, right? And the Congressional Budget Office said, no. Actually, the more the federal government does in that, they only count the input costs. They don't look at the output revenues, in what I would say is the right way. And so ironically, if I said, we're going to increase timber harvest, they would say, well, that's going to cost the federal government. I mean, that's what you deal with. We're trying to fix some of that scoring. But I'd have to look at specifically where in the tax code. Usually, like, unless you get some sort of waiver, which is hard to do. It is, when I got the two-year extension on secure rural schools with the help of then Speaker John Boehner, who made a one-year commitment to me, and then I got him to go to two, it was part of a much bigger package that also took care of a funding formula problem with Medicare, completely unrelated. But we were able to waive points of order or whatever it took, get it done, and got that two-year extension that is now on its last year. But we'll look for every angle we can. One year, I know, we extended SRS, I think Max Bockas, then Chairman of the Revenue, or the Finance Committee of the Senate, found some provision about roll your own tobacco that escaped the tobacco tax, and somebody figured out how to create a machine that rolled your own tobacco, which made it a cigarette, but not taxable. So by closing that loophole, that produced revenue, in theory, that we used to go back to secure rural schools. So we're, we get creative with this. And that's why Biden's perfectly suited to figure this out because he was chairman of the Finance Committee. Could well be again to pay upon how the elections come out, but is certainly the top Democrat on the committee and has a whole staff that knows that tax code. By the way, anybody...
Roll drones more conducive to that site?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Often with these offsets, when you do find one, the last thing you want to do is tell anybody until the last minute. So he may have one, but, because somebody else will steal it if he gets out for their project. Happens all the time. Yes?
Sir, politically, the TPP is just going sour, but what's Congress's position on that, especially here?
Yeah, I don't think, Congress has not taken a position on it. And neither have I. I'm still studying it to look at all the implications because it was just agreed to a couple of months ago. I don't think we've even had hearings on it, and I think it's about 10,000 pages or something. It's a big agreement. That may be an overstatement. I'm sure it is. Very complicated. So I would tell you what I'm hearing from people in our district. If you're in the ag sectors, you're generally or strongly supportive of it because of what it does to open markets in those areas that affect agriculture. Some commodities more than other, depending upon the tariff they're now paying or their market entry barriers they're now being affected by. But I've met with a number of individual ag groups from around the district. I've yet to meet with one that's opposed. So you look at that. Strategically, one of the arguments is TPP binds up everybody, sort of in unison in that area, against China as a, as a trading wedge against China. And that could have some benefit, obviously. But I haven't gotten, taken. Now, I would tell you, nationally, we all know that both major party nominees are actively campaigning against it. Even Tim Kaine, the new vice presidential pick on the Democrat side, who seemed to be for it on Thursday, came out against it on Saturday after he was picked as the VP. And so it's not very popular. I'm not sure it's fully understood yet, and that's why we got to do some more work on it. I do know that if you're in the South where they grow tobacco, the administration completely left tobacco out of it. So a lot of members that represent those tobacco-growing regions that have international trade are against it. There are some of the auto manufacturers in America that are against it, and some of the pharmaceutical manufacturers are against it. So depending upon where you are in the country, you have different groups against. Our ag folks, so far, have been pretty supportive, but I haven't heard a lot beyond that. My guess is if we put it up for a vote right now, it would go down dramatically in the House and the Senate.
Good.
Elaboration on the waters of the United States with the keen interest. Other than not allocating funds for expenditure, I hope quite a few states are taking a lead direction and trying to get that. Can you tell me where that is in the larger picture?
So I believe there was one ruling against it. I don't remember what circuit. Do you remember rightly?
They, they stopped implementation of the rule while the process was pending. And they said, they made some very strong comments about it being overreached by the EPA, but there's been a final decision.
And now you have a split Supreme Court, too, if it gets to that point. So we're trying to buy time and trying to push them back and, you know, hopefully get somebody else in the EPA who would understand, certainly the West, but just how impactful this rule could be in a negative way.
Nate will come out and address how it impacted counties, like county road judges.
Yeah, what did they say?
Well, I didn't catch that they took much of the standard on, but the private landowners is the one that will be impacted the most.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's hard for me. It's sort of predicated on the notion of navigability, right? And the federal government has jurisdiction over navigable waterways, as I recall. And somehow, I've not seen too many ships crossing stockpots. And so I don't think they have jurisdiction. I think it's a completely unnecessary rule and, you know, leaving up to states and locals to manage this.
I've read the Federal Register, 88 pages, and of which I've read a lot during my federal years. I was very impressed at how convoluted, professionally convoluted that Federal Register was, going round, around, around, around. But it affects the private landowners. They say John there got some property and got a swell that has a little wetness in it, and he hasn't ever took it into cultivation, but he plans to get a good point of it. And if it does anyway, then you get in violation.
Right.
So it has major effects on the private landowners.
That's why we're trying to stop it. And we don't have many tools to stop it. One of the tools we have is the power of the purse. Except for, remember, to affect that, we also get that provision into law, we have to have a president that will sign the appropriation bill and a Senate that will pass it. So far, the U.S. Senate has not been able to take up a single one of our appropriation bills, not even for our veterans or our military, which traditionally has flown through. And that's because Harry Reid, basically, with filibuster rule, 60 votes, they've got enough, they can shut down the process, and they have. It's about a default.
Roddick's September Veterans Affairs.
Of which?
Veterans.
Yes.
Can you elaborate what's going on there? Other than chaos?
We are continuing to double down every way we can on the VA to try and make sure that they take care of our veterans. I mean, that's the 30,000-foot statement, I'd say. Because the investigations, mainly of the House Veterans Affairs Committee, we've identified a lot of the problems, and we've come forward with solutions to try and upgrade their computer systems, to put more people in place to process the claims because they have such a long backlog. And then we get something that's virtually impossible to do in the federal government. We gave higher fire authority for senior management to the secretary so that they can actually manage the agency better by replacing people without, well, you know, multi-year process. We've clawed back the bonuses or tried to, that were given to people who weren't even performing the basic job. And so we're trying to do a lot more to improve access to care. We've invested in more medical research to address things such as TBI, traumatic brain injury. As you know, many of our men and women in uniform have come back from battle having endured an IED explosion, and they survived, but it messed up their brains. They have no outward indication of a problem, but they have real serious brain issues. And so we're investing in that. You know, if I were head of the VA for a day, I would create a VA that was the premier in the world at dealing with battlefield injuries and diseases and all the things related to military involvement. And then let the veterans have access to local health care for the basic health and really give the VA a clear focus on what they should be the best at. We created the VA Choice Program, which has a bunch of issues associated with it still, but that was designed to be the reliever valve if you waited more than 30 days or have to go more than 40 miles to get care, that you could get access quicker into the system. You shouldn't have to wait until you're nearly dead. And in some cases, veterans actually die waiting, which is really wrong. So we're trying to, you know, make this a better system for our veterans. We have a long way to go. Long way to go. Yeah.
As part of Obamacare.
Yeah.
If it got repealed or rebuilt in some manner, is there a mechanism in mind to get rid of the 30-hour problem or 30...
Yeah, where businesses are, if you're full-time, you work more than 30 hours.
There's so many people forced to not get over 30 hours.
Right, right. It's a perverse but predictable impact of the so-called Affordable Care Act. How would you describe it? Obamacare or Portable Care? I've actually been with the President's. He's described it as Obamacare, so I don't take it as a negative, although it was a little weird to sit there and have him call it Obamacare in front of himself. Yes is the short end. We could do a lot if we have the votes in all the right places. Yeah, and we should, because what you're doing now is forcing people to either work fewer hours and make less money while their costs are going up, or go get two jobs, which is not family-friendly or worker-friendly. And so that's a problem. Cadillac, so-called Cadillacs is an ever-growing problem that affects both business plans in some cases and a lot of union plans, including a lot of the building trades people that negotiated for higher benefits, maybe not as much pay, but, you know, hey, it's their negotiation. And now they come in and get hit with a 40% penalty, 40% tax on anything above that which the government says is the most that you should get as health insurance cover. Problem that's doubly bad, they never index that. So it's only a matter of time with inflation to where that 40% tax is going to be hitting everybody. And meanwhile, the, I read the other day that the annual increase in premiums for business offered plans is now $3,770 higher than they used to be. And you see in Oregon, we've got 17, over 17,000 people in Oregon whose plan they were on went broke, and before the end of this month, well, just a couple of days here, have to find another plan. And the co-op went broke here. And so, I mean, this is a mess. And I run into so many people who used to have coverage they could afford with premium, both, while they complain, we all complain about the premiums, but they've only gone up since then, but moreover, the deductibles have gone up. That's what is a killer for families. There was a statistic a while back that said 40% of middle-income Americans couldn't come up with an extra 500 bucks. They're living paycheck to paycheck as it is. Now, what happens when you've got one of these plans with a $5,000 or $10,000 deductible? The plan really doesn't kick in and help you much until you've satisfied that. You don't even have catastrophic health at that point. And that's what's happening to people. You know, as you go around a district like ours, you begin to hear these stories over and over and over again, people thought care and their new plan is, they got to lay out the first 5,000 or 10,000. So we'd do a couple of things on reform right away. I'd increase and go back to where we were headed till Obamacare, which was health savings accounts. And you can help people on low income by, through some advanced tax crediting and all to put money in. Then it's your money. Then you can keep saving, put money in there, and then when you get sick, you can use that to pay the deductible or whatever. They took away the ability to use your own health savings account for over-the-counter pharmaceuticals and supplies. They said, you can't do that anymore. So that means it's, you know, out of the pocket. We would restore that. You could also do, we were headed down the path in Oregon pretty successfully. There was more, believe me, there was reform needed to be done before Obamacare. I'm all on board on needing to do that. You know, making sure people that couldn't get access good by dealing with pre-existing conditions, making sure your kid's still 26, can get access to health insurance, still there, kind of out on the market, sort of things you can do. But we need to make it more portable and, so you can take it from job to job, but beyond that, be able to compete across state lines. And you think about the power of consumer competition. We do that, by the way, with Medicare Part D. So anybody have a Medicare Part D policy? For your drugs, Medicare. Most seniors do. And you put in your drugs, and here's your options for plans. It is 40% less costly than what they estimated it would be when it was approved in 2003. Show me another government program that's coming under budget with about an 85% approval rate among seniors. And you don't have buses of seniors going across the line to Canada to buy drugs or Mexico. So there's a way to create a model that works that allows consumers to drive down prices through competition. We don't have that model now. Prices are going up, and they're going to continue to go up, and taxes along with them. There's a trillion dollars in taxes in Obamacare. So there are ways to get at this. High-risk pools, those really in need, we could go to those. They worked in states, far less on the cost level.
On your opening statements, you talked about mental health. Just today, the Board of Commissioners here, we went through an RFP process, and we entered into a contractual agreement with our hospital here to do mental health services. I encourage and thank you to keep... I encourage and thank you to keep all funding for that to keep coming down the pipe. There's more and more coming into our, these rural communities of that need. We have generational things. We have drug problems that are creating several things. Can't encourage you enough to keep that coming down. We believe we made a very good choice today. We're very proud that the hospital board wanted to take that choice on. It's worked towards an integrated service.
That's where it needs to happen.
And we see here is our law enforcement goes out to get somebody. They need mental health. They go down to hospitals, we're not mental health experts, put them in jail. And at the end of the day, we have a hard time getting a service to that client that really needs it. And that's who gets harmed. And it really is dollars. We've gotta have dollars to build to get that on the ground. So thank you and please continue that.
This is all designed, and we don't have it through the senate yet, but it passed it over four hundred votes in the house. So we think it stands a really good chance of moving through the senate. And as part of it, I think the three biggest facilities for people with serious mental illness are Rikers Island Prison, Cook County Jail, and maybe the LA County Jail. They're all prisons, because we haven't created a system to really deal with integrated health. And we've had this firewall between mental health and behavioral, or I'm sorry, fiscal health and behavioral health for far too long. And they're actually, we need to integrate those. Because a lot of it's chemical imbalance and there are things, treatments you can do now, and the two are related. And that's where I hope through the CCO concept with the hospital and all the providers, bringing mental health and services directly into that allows for a more, you know, community-based, patient-centered healthcare delivery system that can really paint evidence and help the families who have problems. Yeah, I've heard so many stories over the last few years on juvenile, kids with mental health, serious mental health issues and no place to treat them. So they get, they get taken into the emergency room in the hospital or into a, there are so few juvenile beds in the state. I don't know what you'd do with somebody here, but my hunch is they probably go to Van der Woon up to Portland.
Klamath.
You go to Klamath. How many beds do you have for juvenile in Klamath, too? Bingo.
You guys will train.
By the way, thanks for your service and all your... We appreciate it. So it's a big issue and we're actually trying to, it's been three and a half years in the making in Congress to really try and get down. And you run into some really thorny issues that are difficult to work through. For example, let's say you have a child that's seventeen, you're helping their mental health. You know he's got a serious problem. They turn eighteen, guess what? They aren't supposed to talk to you anymore about it. That's, it's an adult. And so what happens? And you're the parents and you can't talk. So we were trying to figure out how to protect patient privacy and rights with some ability for traditional caregivers to stay involved in that discussion. But you do have this issue about, well, what if it's an older person, you know, in their twenties or early thirties? And you've had somebody that's been abusive in the family, do they get rights? Who has the rights to be involved in those discussions? So it's really complicated stuff. And we tried to find a sweet spot that, we're not fully there yet. There's more work to do to figure it out. But we're moving in a process so that the sort of certified caregivers along the way can stay involved as family members.
Thank you, and we touched on a little bit. There also has to be funding and education into our law enforcement, into our juvenile PO officers, our adult PO officers, because they, everybody's dealing with this. It's gotta be a complete circuit. They'll get the services to people that need it.
We have that, it's in there. And grants that will be available as well.
Good.
To help with these services.
What about to include for incentives for people to become therapists and whatnot? Enroll communities. Our biggest thing is getting therapists to come here and stay here.
I don't know how much of that, I'll have to go back and look. But I do know we opened the door for telepsychiatry so that we can use, they don't have to physically be located here. The data show you can get pretty good results building a relationship and maintaining it online. And so you can have, you know, this technology, you can have a therapist right there in the room with you. And they can be located in Eugene or Portland or wherever.
That's exactly what the hospital, they received a grant recently just for that very thing.
Is that right? For mental health or for physical?
Both.
Both, yeah.
We do have one mental health therapist already employed by the hospital.
Okay.
Until we get integrated, rest of the...
So that's what we're trying to get to. Whether they are trained and located physically or absent that, can we get, can we just work on that?
There just seems to be such a shortage of people going into that field. And it's adding every day, we're adding people every day to it and not having the providers and therapists to help mitigate that.
And I'm sure you run into this, if you can keep people on their meds. And so that's a, that's part of this. How do we do that? How do we keep them on? Because I remember several years ago, the town hall in Prairie City, and he was a state trooper out of uniform. So, oh yeah, we, you know, about every three weeks, we pick up this one guy. Because he, and then he goes to jail, gets back on his meds while he's in jail. And then he gets out, and then he goes off, and then we pick him up. And it's like, everybody knows who he is, I don't know who he is.
And our jail's so small that whenever it's taken up for something like that and we're having to kick somebody else out, that can be a danger to society. We don't send them out there, but that's prioritized. We have seventeen beds here and two in Klamath. Now, our bill goes at times in today's world, is it sure?
Now, I know some sheriff's offices are putting into the budget cost of paying for these meds, because it's cheaper to pay for the meds on a monthly basis than it is to have that person booked into jail monthly, if that makes sense.
Yeah. But see, that's, you shouldn't have to do that, I get it. But that's the sort of thing, if we could figure out how to get an integrated system, maybe that wouldn't have to come out of your budget. You know, there's a lot of, this is part of our deal, is you've got a hundred and thirty billion being spent today on programs that haven't been peer reviewed. My guess is there's some, and a hundred and twelve separate programs. My guess is somewhere in that consolidation, if we get the right minds at work, you could say, we don't, this one doesn't work. But if we had that money, did this think what we could save there? Now you're into local management.
Whenever we take on the burden of what are the medical costs, are when they're in jail. It has an inherent way of saying, we don't want everybody in our jail. But if there was a way to help fund that, maybe that would, that's a gap in there, that's a struggle. It's sure, we can't budget for it. We don't know what it's going to be. One question, can cost that one?
Now, we certainly wouldn't do that for everybody. But it's just the person that causes the biggest problems, that causes, creates the violence in the community. So it's just a means of keeping the community safe by coming up with the money to pay for the meds and keep this guy on so he doesn't cause violent issues in the community as opposed to just creating a nuisance.
You know, this guy had me at the Hood River Hospital, several, probably been six months, maybe a year now. And they were talking about when they started out their CCO effort, they started by looking at who are the biggest users of the system? The highest-cost users. And not to throw anything bad at those people, but it is, let's look at our biggest, our biggest cost centers and say, is there a way to get that, are we missing something? What are we missing here that we can maybe get our hands around and provide better care and reduce that cost? So they started at their cost centers and were able to identify some patients that they realized they didn't have to do too much change and get real, better lives for them and cost savings for the taxpayers, which is, sounds like what you're doing is identify value investment, which all too often at the federal level, we kind of failed to do. So that's why we'd like to get these decisions down to this level, where you know the people and the players, you know what's going to happen if you don't take care of them.
That's what Eastern American CCO is focused on also. Small percentage that takes up the greatest percentage of the office. And while we're on medical and hope, we spoke about hope, yes, that's a big concern, as we did. Medical marijuana has potential option. Where is that in discussions and as far as promoting research?
Oh, on research? I don't know. I can find out, I don't know if I've talked about it yet. Obviously, in Oregon, Oregonians approve medical marijuana. I'm not sure that we all understood what that really meant in terms of five plants or whatever it was. Suddenly, it's orange grove-sized.
Different numbers of THC and other...
Yeah. A multiple harvest per year and, you know. So I, you know, there would have been a way to go get THC or whatever the ingredients are that are valuable for medicine into a little violent pharmacy, probably, short of big groves that, you know, caused law enforcement kinds of issues. And now we've made the whole thing legal. So that's driving a whole nother wave of issues. You know, I've got a friend that, you know, owns a strip mall and rented out a space to one of these dispensaries. And the bank said, we can't do business with you anymore because it's a violation of federal law. So we're having to call your loan. So we came to him and said, you gotta do something about it. Well, it's against federal law. I mean, it's still considered a criminal enterprise, even though the states have acted in. I guess it's on the ballot in California for this mall. Obviously, Oregon, Washington, Colorado are those the three that approve it?
Alaska also, I believe. But there's about five or six states that...
Yeah. At some point, there will be a majority of the population and then federal law will probably change. But boy, I hate to encourage it, frankly.
Yeah.
Medical's one thing if they...
Medical is one of my pet interests. If we can get freed up enough to have the proper research, not for the THC, because that's the dirty part. I can't think of the other compound that's actually...
CBD.
CBD, but...
Is that part of the deals with nausea and all?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's why, you know, you could have sent this off and done research and it does help people, that's fine. But I think that was a piece of that ballot measure, it was not the biggest piece.
I think the challenge, Ken, is that it's, you know, like you said, it's federally illegal. And so, funding can't go forward to research on it in a federal facility. But maybe that's changing a little bit to leave, you know...
I think it will over time. You know, we had an amendment which I ended up supporting because I'm trying to follow the will of Oregon voters. On the medical marijuana side, I opposed it a year ago and I, you know, changed my mind and voted for it this time. We've said that if you're in the VA system, your doctor at the VA can talk to you about medical marijuana. Federal law says they can't even talk to you about it. So you're an Oregonian, you're a veteran, it's legal in our state. You can go to any other medical provider except your own. And if you're at the VA, and they can't even talk to you about it. So I voted for it. It got stripped out in conference with the senate. But, you know, it did seem to make more sense to me if it's going to be, you know, if everybody else gets to do it, then why shouldn't a veteran be able to talk to his or her doctor in the VA? In Portland or somewhere. I mean, it seemed like they would know the veteran best, so...
And is it, I'm not sure, not to get on soapbox, but if a veteran self-prescribes or self-partakes in that, they can be, you know, revoked of any other VA support?
I wasn't aware of that.
That's what I think I read it somewhere, I don't know. So I don't know if it's true or not.
I'll have to look at that. That's the first time I, doesn't mean it's not true. First time it's come up. I'm sure there are no veterans that are able to self-prescribe. Just saying. It's a strange new world, actually, but it does... Yes?
While we're on the veterans subject, I gotta give kudos to the Veterans Choice Program because after almost forty years of waiting, I finally got a re-approvision.
Excellent. Where'd you have that done, if I may?
In Bend at Deshaw Peak.
Perfect.
However, we didn't receive any COLA this year. I understand that our president vetoed two-point-five-million-billion for veterans' COLA and veterans' benefits. Get authorized four-point-five-billion for illegal immigrants sub-reseling. Is that true?
I'd have to research both of those. I thought veterans did get a COLA. I know we have a COLA built into our, into our veteran spending bill. So we put it in the house. We'll check.
And we made it.
Oh. All right, okay.
The ones who raised our right hand, it's for the Constitution of our lives, Scott.
Well, I thought we've done a COLA for veterans every year.
Yeah, no, not this year.
Huh, all right. We'll double check. I know in the House bills, when we've passed them, we've generally passed what even higher and what the president's requested for active duty and veterans.
Unfortunately, he owns a red pen, I'm sure that he'd have been named, so...
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to check.
Please do.
For the House? Yes, sir?
When I retired from working out at Collins Company out here, for about three years, we've been running about three to five people short. Nobody can pass a background check or the drug test, but yet they still get their welfare money. My question is, why can't we pass a bill to make them work twenty-five, thirty hours, give me service or something, to get that money? Because it's costing business people. They can't hire them if they're on drugs. And they still get that money? That needs to stop.
We have a whole welfare poverty reform agenda we hope to move in the next Congress. So we're just laying out the framework out now as part of what we call it, better ways, Republicans in the House. Since the Johnson War on Poverty back in the sixties, we've spent twenty-two trillion dollars on the war on poverty. The percentage of those in poverty in America is the same as it was then. And I think the number, I don't have any paper, but forty-six million, I think, are in poverty. And the system is rigged to keep you in poverty, basically, because if you work just enough, then you lose it all. And so we think you could take the same money we're spending today and do things like that. Get people back into work, work into the system and then transition out as opposed to a cliff. Because, you know, people are people. They're going to run the numbers for their own self. And if they, you know, the way the system works today, you get up to a certain point, it's a cliff. And you, if you make a certain amount, you lose all the benefits. And then you're all on your own and it's far worse off than if you don't work. That's not the kind of system we should have. And so, and on the drug piece, I was part of a negotiation with the senate several years ago trying to reform the employment, unemployment system to not, not, we couldn't even get drug testing that would then lead to rehabilitation services into the bill. The senate, Democrats in the senate said, no. They wanted nothing to do with any of that. We weren't even going to deny the benefits. So we're not talking about denying the benefits, but the odds of you getting a job if you're still on drugs is about zero. So let's identify you have a problem and then we'll even work into the treatment piece so that you can get into recovery and then get, you know, firsthand on the ladder coming up economically. Could not get that in there. I was just, it wasn't even punitive, it was designed to be helpful. Nope. And so this is the battle we face in a left-right debate about which way the country should head. So we're trying to lay all these things out. And you can go on, was it betterway.gov or dot GOP? Dot GOP, betterway.gov. And we looked at Article One, which is pulling back the overreach of the executive from the legislative branch. All these executive orders that frankly, we've sued on and are winning on. And in one case on Affordable Care Act, the president's agency spent seven billion dollars to insurance companies that we as Congress never authorized. So we sued on that. First time the House has gotten status in its entire existence to actually enter court and sue. It's very hard to get standing. We did and we prevailed. This is an extraordinarily important principle. Because we get to the point where any chief executive, pick them, Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, I don't care. If they don't have to come to Congress, we have money, then they just do whatever they want. And that's bad for our system of government. So we've won on that provision at this point. It'll be appealed, I'm sure, but we've won. So we're trying to get at these different sets of issues. Poverty's one of them. So Article One and separation of powers, poverty is one of them. But I know Speaker Ryan has worked on for years. His big passion is to help people out of poverty in America. And the way the system works today, it tends to attract people in. The incentives are all backwards. And I encourage you to betterway.gov. Maybe you'll get a lot more detail. Some of the proposals would love to get your input, too. What else? Sheriff?
I know this is relatively new, but is the senate looking at anything regarding open season on law enforcement in America by certain groups? And if so, what are we looking at? And are we looking at maybe classifying these groups as domestic terrorists?
Yeah. So I'm in the House, not the senate, so I don't know exactly what the senate may be doing. You know, I, I take an oath of office to, you know, defend the Constitution by a by. I believe in the whole Constitution, First Amendment, Second Amendment, Fourth Amendment, due process rights and all. And, and so I think that as principles, important to maintain your Second Amendment rights. In terms of some of these incredible attacks, I don't know where that line is. But clearly, law enforcement has become a target of attack and indiscriminately so, or maybe discriminately so. You've come right at, you look at Dallas shootings, you look at some of the others. I don't know of any effort to try and classify groups that way. I think there's already an additional penalty in the law for attacks on law enforcement firefighters. I think there's an added penalty, but you know what, that doesn't do you much good if they've already shot you, right? I mean, there's a law against murder. So it's hard to get at. I think part of it is about better leadership at the top and making clear that this is the kind of behavior that is never going to be tolerated, never should be tolerated in America. And not coddling some of these groups that engage. What do you think we should, how do you think, you're on the front lines, you and your.
I don't know, I, I, it's a, it's a tough call. Obviously, if, this can't be tolerated. We're the first line of defense. And when organizations or individuals start disrespecting that first line of defense, where do we go? We go into KI society. I know some judges have made a decision that there'll be absolutely no plea agreements. That they will, people who engage in this conduct will be held accountable without plea agreements and sentenced to the most extreme extent of the, of the law. But I was just wondering if our government was, was looking at doing something like this because I know certain entities of our government are, to a certain respect, encouraging these.
Feels that way, doesn't it?
It does, yes, sir.
I do know that right after the attack in Dallas, a good friend and colleague of mine, Pete Sessions, whose dad at one point was head of the FBI, actually moved a bill through rapidly in the House in response that dealt with better training and access to, both training and I think equipment. This came out from the Dallas Police Department and said, this is what we really need, is better training in how to deal with this type of a, of a massive casualty shooting event. Like they apparently get in the military. And so we cleared the decks and did what they thought would be helpful to deal with it, hopefully never, but be ready in case there's a similar sort of situation. Beyond that, you know, we got the whole other side that wants to make it all about the gun and take away gun rights. And so that's the fight you end up with immediately. You know, just for, for the record, they talked about no fly, no buy. Well, you don't know how you get on the no-fly list. By the way, there are multiple lists. You don't know how to get, whether you're on it, how you got on it, or how to get off when there's no due process. So some agents even put your name on it and you go lawfully buy a hunting rifle and you can be denied if you went down that track. The terrorist watch list is similarly multifaceted. By the way, nearly everybody on the terrorist watch list is a foreigner, they're not USers. It is already illegal for anybody that's a foreigner to buy a firearm in the United States. You know, that's already covered, so you're down to probably 3%. And once again, that list is not a legal, nor is there a real open process about how you get on or get off. And the FBI has told us, be careful going down this path because we have some active investigations underway. And if they do go to buy a gun, you could blow up the whole investigation. We're watching, you could, you could tip them off in effect. So they've actually said to Congress, be careful, don't do this. So there are some things we're trying to work out to protect our due process and our rights. One of the things states could do, and many don't, is integrate their, their lists. People who've been adjudicated to be violent offenders are not all in the N C, what is it, NCIS list? N C.
N C I, N C I C.
Yeah, into that list, there are a number of states that don't integrate, I don't know if Oregon's one of them. But if we just got all that in there, then you could just enforce the existing laws more effectively. But we as a community ought to defend our law enforcement. Doesn't mean everybody in law enforcement, by the way, is pure. I mean, we do know there are problems at times, Doc. But I'll tell you what, we better stand by our first responders.
Right.
And that needs to be the message.
Is that state list you're talking about, pick up the mental health issues?
If you're adjudicated. This gets back into the whole issue about mental health we talked about. If you're not careful, you'll cause people to never seek help when they need it out of fear of losing their rights. So that's one of those issues you have to really think through. But if you've been adjudicated to be a violent offender some way or another, the law's already there about whether you should have access to a gun or not, a firearm or not. But some states apparently don't integrate that list into the overall database. So you might be able to screen out some people who have a adjudicated history, they've had a due process. If, if there's better cooperation. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I got in here late, I have another meeting, but the frustration I have is with federal government adopting more laws on guns is they're not doing anything about these laws they've got now. And maybe we talked about that, but I tried.
We were just having that discussion.
I tried to get prosecution, I was a prosecutor out of Clamton Falls on a, because they had a conflict over there. And it was a defendant who had a prior felon firearm, he had possession of methamphetamine, he had a prior felon in possession of body armor. And I couldn't get the feds to prosecute him. So we prosecuted him over there, but under the Oregon statutes, Oregon is designed to try to keep people.
Right.
From going to prison. And so felon firearms just aren't going to go to prison unless you have a prior rape or robbery or felony assault. You're just not going to go to prison. They, they guaranteed that you can't do that, so you're stuck in county jail and our county jail's pretty much full. Most of the time, or a lot of times. So it's very frustrating to have more laws that, that's adopt more laws on guns when you're not going to enforce the ones you've got. It just seems like it's designed to infringe on everybody else that really aren't criminals.
That was, that was the setup of this, we already have Second Amendment rights, Fourth Amendment due process rights. And some of these proposals in Congress would take away both. It's a nice hashtag for our campaign, it's just not good public policy. It takes away your rights. So that's, that was the point, I was maybe some of these states have these lists and then don't integrate it into the national system. So you could actually screen out some people that have already been adjudicated and under today's law couldn't get a firearm. If, if those data were in the national list.
I don't think most of the people that I get that have guns purchase them.
You know, that'd be the other thing, wouldn't it?
I don't think Biden gun is really the issue, it's really the possession of the guns, real problem.
But I'm with you, we, we've got a lot of laws on the books that could be better enforced. I should also introduce Al Schweitzer, who's County Commissioner in Clamton County for many years, many of you may know Al. He's running to represent this area in the legislature. So Al, let's give you a video here. What else?
I, I can speak a little bit more, I guess. Within Oregon, there's 1.9 million acres of the sagebrush focal withdrawal, B L M withdrawal across the western United States, it's 10 million acres based around sage grouse. None of us want the sage grouse listed. And we're cooperating, cooperating agency with B L M on this. I encourage you and your staff to, when they get, when they're right there, get their alternative, what one they're going to use. Because there's no place in there for mitigation for these mining people. And mining is inclusive, it affects the county because of the gravel that is mining. And so the map that Oregon has designed, it shows the core habitat, shows that all that and the less habitat is all within that. So that's part of the withdrawal, part of it.
So you wouldn't be able to do any gravel pits within that area?
The existing ones, they'll not go out of their parameter that they're permitted for now. And I'm not 100% versed on this whole thing, pretty complex, pretty thick, like you say. But let's say there, there's gold, there's a gravel pit, or there's some other kind of mining found. There's no place in there for mitigation to mitigate that out and build and take advantage of that material. And this is a 25-year thing. So we don't want to tear up the habitat of the, of the sage grouse. We all understand that, our government and our business people understand those things. But there has to be an opportunity for mitigation. It wasn't that many years ago, right here in, in the Lakeview area, the railroad was saved because of the sawmills. We got down to, send that one car a month because we didn't have the sawmills anymore. But we do have perlite now. And we found that mineral, that mineral was discovered. I don't want to miss out on any opportunities for our future generations because there's not a place in there for mitigation. So if you and your staff would change that.
We'll do that.
At least, that's my battle on it. You can't change it, but if we could get that mitigation in there, it helps.
Well, as you know, Senator White and the Berkeley vote put a bill in from Valuer County to do a complete mineral withdrawal. Two and a half million acres, which I don't understand what that's about. And I don't know if that's proposed anywhere else, I haven't seen it.
But it might be part of this whole withdrawal.
I'll tell you what, there, there's nothing we do, we have, that doesn't eventually come out of, at some core, come out of ground. Just try and turn on your cell phone.
And the thing is, if we don't take it out of ground here, end of the issue will without any.
China's been cornering the market on rare earth minerals and other precious metals all over the world. And I can't for the life of me understand why we would take these out of our potential future with these withdrawals and shutdowns and lands. And I agree, look, I, I think Oregonians can do a really good job managing sage grouse habitat and, 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 and population. We can do that, we don't need the feds to come in and tell us to do that. And that's why I keep supporting this effort that says, year after year, they can't be listed. And we got to hold that in the Senate and the White House, but we need more time to get these plans in place and really get them right. And so we'll, we'll look into this mineral issue, that's a new one.
And we have enough federal overreach already.
You think?
On that subject of the sage grouse and the minerals and so forth, that was on the SageCon for, seems like eternity. But it mostly addressed the non-federal lands. And had to give a load of ground to give some restrictions, some use. But when it came out of it with the land use part of, of the SageCon, going through the planning department and others, we had mitigation. Okay, the states have done that. And that was mostly to try to set it up so in case it was listed, Oregon could manage, could manage under OD rule. So the federal government utilizes the state O D F W, sells sage grouse map habitat. So the federal government, they use the state habitat map. They can also utilize, as Commissioner Wim said, our procedure for mitigation as we did on our L C D part of the SageCon.
Do you make a note of that too?
Something, medication costs money and it's hard to mitigate in an arid environment. But just no consideration at all.
One of the things of the sage grouse is that the term of wild horses, a lot of them are mostly feral horses, they're not really wild. They're, they're wild because people don't have a market to get rid of their horses, so they just release them. I think the, one of the environmental groups is now suing the federal government because B L M's practice that was proposed is to do some sterilization on horses. And it's, I think, very frustrating from a local perspective to have some sort of solution to try to reduce the federal horses. And then suddenly you got a bunch of horse lovers in Portland that tell us, I'm sorry, you're not going to be able to sterilize these horses, we're just going to let them breed at random.
At the expense of our environment.
Right, they're the ones that are going to make the, if anything, is that horses are going to have more impact than people on the sage grouse, on the sage grouse being listed.
And you know, I've asked the B L M, so if I were a cattle rancher and I had like, oh, 500 head more than I'm supposed to on my allotment, what would happen to me? Right, it's like, so you're a B L M, you've got 500 more horses or whatever the, it's multiples of what they're supposed to have in their management plan. Where's the equal justice? Well, we don't have the money, we don't, yeah, they always have an excuse. Now, to their credit, Steve Ellis, who used to be down here, has really, really pushed the agency to do the roundup or. Yeah, made his view. And I've talked to him about that, not lately, but he really, we owe him a big debt of gratitude because he interceded and said, that's a priority and needs, that needs to happen.
The thing is, the sage grouse has, I think, five, five factors for listing. Those two of them, habitat loss or mitigation, lack of regulatory mechanisms. So that's why the SageCon came about to establish some state site.
Fires the number one.
Habitat loss.
Cattle is like way down on the list.
But the lack of regulatory mechanism.
Mining is not on the list, by the way.
The lack of regulatory, regulatory mechanism applies to the Bureau of Land Management also. And that was a big emphasis push for Steve and others, is that not only does the state need to have, address the regulatory mechanism, but the federal government with horses also has to.
I agree. They ought to do their part. And, and as you say, I mean, I think we spend, is it 40 million a year?
60.
60.
That's because they, they have to adopt them out, anything they round.
They don't adopt them out, no, this is just to maintain them.
Oh, it's 50 grand per horse for the lifetime. Once they're rounded out, the, you have, they're not allowed to put them down, they're just.
Like their house and.
They're house, we got a house and feed them and then.
Right, until they die.
Their unadoptable ones, $100,000 per day, B L M, that's the last number I heard, take care of them.
It's a lot.
It's a tough issue with the wild horse enthusiasts and.
Well, I'll tell you, we lose this battle every time it comes up on the House floor. Every time it comes up, because the National Humane Society and others just have all these votes in their pocket because they, they paint this picture of, you know, we all love horses. And to show them what it looks like when they're starving out here on the range or whatever the damage they do or, or whatever else. And they just, they, we're outvoted. There aren't that many of us in these big districts and states. There, there, maybe that's what we should do.
That is sterilization. But what helped on, with Steve and giving horses time, this is some of a local rancher stepping up for adoption and training program. That was a big plus.
I remember that came up in the meeting we had in your other, your old chambers a couple of years ago. I talked to Steve about that as well, so it's a good thing. I also want to recognize Jane O'Keefe. Speaking of habitat management, she and John and the whole cattle, done a great job trying to stay out ahead of that, so we appreciate their work as well. I'm going to head over to Clamton and a couple meetings over there later today. So thank you for, for coming out on this gorgeous day, it's good to be back in the West.
One of the assets we talked about, all the things in society, we tend to address the symptoms, we don't address the causes.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get to the cause. Then we'll have fewer symptoms and less cause.
Thank you all.